He's like, oh, no. He didn't think Jordi man. He was like, no. He's like, I, I don't love you guys.
Yeah. Well, you get money involved and, you know.
Yeah, that's why you just, um, we just went right down the hat. Cause we're the only two.
We're the other Alderman person.
So it's fifty fifty.
They're on vacation.
On vac- yeah. Oh, they're still gone?
Well, we, we do have one rental house that our, our oldest grandson is.
They're, they're in Disney World, aren't they? I'm sorry.
We do have one rental house that we have, uh, our oldest grandson, his family is living there. But he's, he's so far, he's been, of course, Phil was too, until towards the end.
Why don't you just sell it?
We've talked about it, but he really can't afford it. So, and I'm not gonna just give it away.
No.
Like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. The second order of business is the, well, first, let me announce that, uh, Alderman Vapirzan and Alderman Williams are out of state and they will not be here tonight. So we have six council members present, but that is a quorum. Uh, next order of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'll lead us in that tonight.
Most loving heavenly father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this beautiful weather that you bestowed upon the city of Mammell. We're thankful for the citizens of Mammell, Lord, and we're thankful for the uniformed personnel that, that provides service to them, Lord, and keeps them safe and, uh, reaches out to them in times of trouble, Lord. We'd ask you to be with those service, those, uh, uniformed personnel, Lord, to, to keep them safe during their duties. We'd also ask you to be with our servicemen and women that serve this country, Lord, and keep them safe, especially the ones that are overseas, serving a tour of duty over there, Lord. We'd ask you to bring them back to their families, safe and sound. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The, uh, next item is special guests and announcements, and, uh, our, uh, probation officer, court, uh, security officer and deputy clerk from Mammell District Court, Mr. Michael McNeil, was named the Officer of the Year by the Arkansas Court Officers Association. And so, uh, there's, you should've seen an article in the Mammell Monitor last week that highlighted that, but we just wanted to recognize him tonight. And, uh, he's not here or anything like that, but we, I just wanted y'all, make y'all aware of that. But he, the Officer of the Year is given to a person who's gone above and beyond the call of duty in their job, uh, within the association that they serve and within their community. So, uh, we could all be proud of Mr. McNeil. So let's give him a round of applause. Serves our court system well down there. Next item is approval of the minutes of the March sixth regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packets? Is there any additions or corrections?
Make a motion.
Some move.
To approve?
To approve.
Okay. Motion is second to approve the minutes of March the sixth. There in discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I don't have any public comment cards, uh, per se. The person gave me one, but they said if I'll just answer a couple of questions later, and I'll do that later. Um, the, uh, next item is the financial statement review, and you have a copy of the financial statements in your packet? And Ms. Cordy is here to answer any questions on that. Are there any questions for the February financials?
It's always nice.
Do you have any statements that you?
I, I do have a couple of things I wanna tell you.
Okay.
I'm hoping by the next meeting, we'll have the printed budget for this year that y'all usually get a bound copy of that, and that we'll have to publish the year-end financials by the first of April with the state. So any of those audit adjustments will be done on, before then, get those out there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cordy. If there's not any questions on the February financials, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
Been motion second that the council approved the financials for February? Any discussion on that motion? If not, or any, if not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion as second to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only? Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the second reading of ordinance number nine twenty-nine, amending the master land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine twenty-nine, and ordinance amending the Mammell Land Use Plan and map and for other purposes.
Okay, this is on second reading, and it was, uh, discussed at first reading. It's, uh, three parcels that are out near the county's mass extension, uh, where the White Oak Equestrian Center used to be at. Okay, this item will be on third reading at the next meeting. Okay, moving on to the next item, we have the second reading of ordinance number nine thirty, amending the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty, and ordinance amending the Mammell Zoning Map and for other purposes.
Okay, this is the same piece of property that we just discussed in, uh, ordinance nine twenty-nine. That was the master land use plan amendment, and this is the rezoning. That'd be, uh, a rezoning from, uh, PRD to C four. Okay, if there's noted more discussion on that, or if there's not any discussion on that, we'll move, that'll be on third reading at the next meeting. We'll move on to the next item, which is ordinance number nine thirty-one, amending the master land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-one, and ordinance amending the Mammell Land Use Plan and map and for other purposes.
Okay, this is, uh, a land use amendment for, uh, uh, changing some land from R one to PRD at the villas, uh, at River Point. And Blake is in the audience tonight. If there's any questions for him, uh... Okay, if not, uh, this will be on third reading, uh, at the next council meeting. And then we'll address the zoning for the same piece of property. So we'll have the second reading of ordinance number nine thirty-two, amending the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-two, and ordinance amending the Mammell Zoning Map and for other purposes.
Okay, this is the rezoning. So it'd be rezoning the property from R one to PRD, but it's the same piece of property that was just on the land use plan. And I think last time you had a, uh, a very nice handout that showed you what the facility was gonna become. It's basically a, uh, a social area. Uh, so it's gonna be, uh, some, uh, hot tubs and a, and a pool, a small pool, and then a croquet court area, uh, to be used by the, uh, residents of the villas at River Point Drive. Okay, if there's no discussion on that item, this will also be on third reading at the next meeting. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number nine thirty-three, amending ordinance nine ten. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-three, and ordinance amending section three of ordinance nine ten.
Alderman Mosley.
I'm, uh, going to recuse myself because, uh, I'm involved in litigation with the city over this subject.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Mosley. This is, uh, trying to clarify, i-if you remember in ordinance, um, nine ten, it was addressing some fences that were on the, uh, Odom South and along Mammell Boulevard, and it listed all of Rolling Oak Subdivision. Well, when, uh, Mr. City Attorney was doing some research, he decided that we didn't need to do all of those subdivisions. So basically, I'm gonna turn it over to him and let him explain, uh, but he felt like we needed to tighten up the ordinance, basically, that we had.
Basically, the goal is to be a little more specific. There's a map up there with, uh, the highlighted lot numbers. To the left side of the screen is roughly where Odom is, to the bottom is where Mammell Boulevard is. All of those homes are the homes that, um, the council asked me to draft ordinance nine ten for. They all are in phase two. For some reason, when I drafted this, I went broader and said phases one, two, and three, and it applied to all the homes on or near the rights-of-way of North Odom Boulevard and Mammell Boulevard. And I didn't draft it as specific as I could. I was thinking, you know, along the rights-of-way of both Odom North and Mammell Boulevard, and it would apply to these. Uh, however, when you, when you read it as it was written, uh, and then combine my understanding of what Odom North and Mammell Boulevard are, and then you apply it to phases one and three, which are not on this map, it became questionable, really, what was meant. So I redrafted this to be more specific, to, to identify those homes that it was my understanding the council, uh, wanted to exempt from that regulation.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So all the homes that were affected by the... Well, the property line dispute, I guess, I don't know how, a better way of saying it, or...
Well, there's not a property line dispute. The, the fences are own, city-owned property.
Okay.
And just this area that the city attorney has highlighted, the area to the east, they're on the property lines, and the area to the north, they're on the property lines.
And they were supposed to be...
They should've been, well, depends on who claims ownership.
Right, that's why we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess what I'm trying to ask is everyone that was affected by that oversight is going to be affected by this, uh...
If your question is, are there any other houses other than these in phases one and three where the fence extends beyond the property line?
Yes.
The answer is, I believe so.
Okay, so...
But the, the, we have all those letters going back a number of years to when the city gave the, the fences back, and it had to do with the, the, these properties, if that makes sense.
Okay, I just don't wanna leave anybody out that is, you know, like, the neighbor gets, uh, a reprieve, but then they don't. You see what I'm saying? So I don't want...
Well, and so my concern was drafting it in such a way that it over-included...
Well, I don't wanna do that either.
What we were talking about at that time. If y'all wanted to broaden it to apply to other residences than just these, that's something the council can consider.
So these are the only residents that were, kind of, we were in dispute with? I, I, I know that's strong language, but that, they were the only ones that were really, we were trying to target when we were drafting this originally?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay.
And, and, and let me tell you, so that fence, I think what had, it's a guess, is when they built that fence, they built the whole fence, and the whole thing is entirely over the property line.
Gotcha.
There's a few other areas that maybe aren't noticeable from the Boulevard, um, that are behind trees, where the fences aren't equal with one another. Though you'll go down and there'll be one fence that juts out a little bit.
And that does that all of a sudden.
This was the one unifying.
Okay.
But I don't think the fences that Mr. City Attorney is referring to, that jut out a little bit, they don't go all the way to the right-of-way of Mammell Boulevard. It don't appear to.
Okay.
Uh, they, they may extend beyond their neighbor's fence a few feet, but they don't go the fifteen feet is what, and that's looking at an aerial, uh, photograph. That's not going out there and doing surveys. So that's why we can't, uh, confidently say there's not any that'll be over a property line or anything like that without having a survey done on that.
I guess, and then if that comes up, we can address it as it comes.
Alderman Anderson, my goal isn't to change what the council had wanted to do, but to more specifically address just what the council wanted to do. If, if there, you know, if y'all had, wanted to change what we were doing last time, we can certainly look at that.
I think we pretty much discussed that to a T. It just, I just wanted to make sure we were kind of all in the same, um, same chapter.
And I, I've, I'm surprised I have eyebrows and eyelashes, cause I've been plucking them out, trying to figure out why I included phases one and three. Uh, and, and, you know, it's beyond me, I don't know.
Thank you.
Cause that's the three plaits I gave you, probably, maybe. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for the city attorney, um, and I, and I understand that this is probably an opinion question. Do you feel like ordinance nine ten or ordinance nine thirty-three, the proposed one here, is setting any sort of precedence on our fence ordinance, other fence ordinances or regulations?
What do you mean by setting a precedence?
Well, i-if, if we tell these people, I guess what I'm asking, and we've already done it, I mean, I voted on, on this before, on nine ten, but I am curious if, if another person comes by and they say, "Well, I build over a line, and I should be allowed to do that because this ordinance, you allow these people to do it."
Will that happen?
Well, I, I'm not saying it will.
Is that the question you're asking me? Will that happen?
Are we setting a, a precedence here for that situation, if somebody does do that?
So I think when creating legislative laws, the concern over precedence can sometimes be overstated. If, if the question is whether someone will complain that we did it for these residences and not for other residences, I am a hundred percent positive the city will be in litigation over this issue regarding someone else who says that we allowed these residences to build their fences beyond their property line. And I'm a hundred percent positive because we're currently in litigation where someone is claiming that we, you know, they're being treated differently.
Well, I don't claim to be an attorney, but, and I probably misunderstand precedents, but, um...
Well, but, and we s-we gave these, we, we sent a letter in two thousand four, two thousand five, I don't remember the exact date, but gave these fences to these residents.
Right.
So that's where I think, you know, one, you know, back then, we said, "Okay, this is your fence, it's not our fence, you gotta take care of it." But then then, then now, then we came back later and said, "Wait a minute, no, that fence is on our property, we can't give it to you, you need to move it back now," you know? So, so I think we kinda let the cow out of the barn back then, as far as if you're saying we're setting a precedence or we did something different, we did something different back then. We gave them a fence that was on city property.
And if I, if I could clarify, precedence is what is made of it. I, i-in other words, if, if I was an alderman and I voted as, you know, to allow these fences to go over the line, personally, I would vote to allow them to always go over the line when the same conditions are met.
Right.
Uh, and in this case, there are some pretty unique conditions that I don't know we're gonna see replicated anywhere else. There is supposedly other fences that were given to the property owners at some point a long time ago. I don't know what those properties are. And suppose, i-if we were to encounter an issue where we now realize that those were over the line, um, then someone may be able to argue that I'm in a similar situation as, as these residents. So y'all should do it then.
But to have a precedence legally, it would have to be a similar situation where we had given, um, fences to people that belonged on the city land, so similar situation.
Well, well, it, it's a legislative issue, so it doesn't have to be the same. It'd be my recommendation if another, if we came on another subdivision that had the same situation with fences that had been given back to the residents, uh, it turned out the fences were on common property and not on their property, it would make sense if the council then decided to create another exemption for those. But, I mean, that would be completely up to the council.
Okay. I think we've answered it.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Anderson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think you pretty much said what I was gonna say, um, that this was a unique situation and, and that they were given the fences that were already on the property, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussions in ordinance number nine thirty-three? Okay, if not, this will be on second reading at the next meeting. Moving on to mayor's comments, uh, first item is recap the National League of Cities trip to DC. I will, we, we had a little bit of discussion before the meeting started. Uh, I will tell you that it's the coldest trip I've made to Washington DC. Uh, and once we got there, they were forecasting anywhere from three to twelve inches of snow to show up on Monday night, and so people were worried about getting out of town, people were worried about getting into town, um, but we didn't have any travel problems at all. Um, and then we had our meeting scheduled on Tuesday, or, yeah, Tuesday afternoon, and so by ten o'clock, the snow was cleared away, and most of the sidewalks were good and everything. But we had three good meetings with, uh, Senator Bozeman's staff. Uh, he had actually been called to the White House, so we didn't get to meet with him on Tuesday, uh, but, um, that's a pretty good valid reason, you know, he got called to the White House. And then we met with Senator Cotton and his staff, and then we met with Representative Hill and his staff, and, uh, then went back and then on, uh, had some good meetings with them, and then, and they were telling us, you know, "The budget's gonna come out this week. If anybody tells you what's in the budget, they're lying, because nobody knows yet what's in the budget." And then we saw on Thursday, it came out, and it, it's causing some issues because it's cutting some programs and everything that affect Arkansas. Uh, and then, uh, on Wednesday, we had a meeting, a luncheon meeting, and we were meeting with Senator Wa, or, uh, Representative Womack, Representative Hill, and Senator, uh, Bozeman came to that meeting, and so he came and apologized that he couldn't meet with us the day before, and, uh, but then he spoke a little bit, then he had to leave again pretty quick. But, uh, so I think it was a good trip. Uh, we took, uh, three people that had never been up there before, and, uh, I think they, uh, got a new realization of what goes in Washington DC as far as that type of meeting. I mean, ta-be going up there as a tourist is one thing, but then going back, uh, in this role is a totally different thing, so, uh, but it was a very good trip as far as I was concerned. Alderman Mosley?
I was gonna ask you, did, did you all have a specific business purpose in meeting with any of those legislators, uh?
Uh, yes, uh, we, the marketplace fairness tax is what we really emphasized a lot, uh, which is the internet sales tax. And it's, it may not be as important an issue if Amazon continues to collect sales tax off the product that's sold through Amazon, but there's still a lot of other businesses that sell product to Mammell that we don't get anything off of, and the state doesn't get anything off of it. What most people don't understand, it's a state law that you're supposed to remit to the state your taxes on products purchased over the internet. It's part of your income tax that you should send, but they can, they collect such a small percentage of that, that's why we're trying to pass. It's, it, there's two, two acts. One's called the Marketplace Fairness Act, the other's called the Remote Transaction Parity Act. Uh, but, uh, Representative Womack has been a sponsor of both of those, and they, they actually passed the Senate in two thousand thirteen, they passed again in two thousand fifteen, but they can't get it to pass the House. The, the gentleman that's head of that committee, Representative Goodlatch, just keeps it held up in committee all the time and won't let it go to a vote because he's opposed to it. Uh, and we're, you know, Senator Cotton is not for it, I will tell you that. He's more for an origin tax, but, uh, which I would take that too with Dillard's being here, and they're an internet fulfillment center, but, uh, that doesn't work for all the other cities in Arkansas. And so, uh, it's one of those things, it's a fairness issue. If you see in the, you saw in the paper last week, J.C. Penney's is closing down more store. You, you see retailers closing down stores, it's because they start out eight and a half percent to ten percent behind an internet seller, basically because of the sales tax that they're having to remit locally. And you could buy the same product, but if it's several hundred dollars, and you can buy it over the internet and save ten percent or eight and a half percent off of it, you're gonna buy it off the internet, especially if they're gonna give you free shipping, cause it's over fifty dollars. So, so that's the issue we're dealing with. That's one that we talked to them about. We also talked to them about infrastructure, because that's been a, a big issue of President Trump, is the infrastructure, brought up the third interchange and everything, that maybe the, we don't get that funded by the federal government, but if they do infrastructure projects in the state of Arkansas, that frees up other monies by the state that would allow that to go to that project. We also talked about CDBG money a little bit, which is Community Development Block Grants. That doesn't, we don't get a lot of those, we get some every now and then in the industrial park, but that is one program that got cut in President Trump's budget. And, uh, so, you know, that's just some issues that we talked to them about, and you're, you're pretty short.
Tax-free bonds.
Oh, the, the, yeah, yeah. The other one, yeah, was the municipal bonds. So we, we do almost all of our infrastructure with tax-free municipal bonds. Well, there's, there's a concern that if they go through a tax reform, they may take those away. And that would, that would hurt Mammell tremendously, because that's how we finance everything. And, and if you talk to all of our senators' representatives, they said that there's nothing gonna happen to it, but you never know what they're gonna try to slip into a tax reform bill, and they understand that that's something that the people get to vote on themselves. Okay, yeah, this is a project worthy of it, and we get to vote on it, and that's the project that's built, and then there's, there's the bonds that pay for it. The city cannot borrow, borrow money longer than five years. So the only way we have to finance a long-term project is through a bond issue. And so therefore, that's part of the deal is, um, we have to have that funding in place and use bond issues, and if you take away the tax-free part of it, the investors probably wouldn't buy those bonds, because we get them, you know, we're, we're getting three and, three to four percent interest on those, and it's not worth their money to tie it up for twenty-five to thirty years. So that was the other one that we talked to them about, and it's very important to Mammell. And they were very receptive. Like I say, Senator Cotton disagrees with us on the, the, uh, Marketplace Fairness Act, but we keep, we, we've hit him now three years in a row, so, you know, we're gonna keep hitting at him till we can sway him, I hope, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, just a, uh, note, the Run for the Fallen will come through Mammell on March the twenty-sixth, which is Sunday. Uh, if you don't know what the Run for the Fallen is, it's, uh, they will run a hundred and forty-six miles from, uh, Ozark City Hall, starting at nine o'clock on Friday, the twenty-fourth, and every mile, they will stop and place a, uh, American flag for a serviceman that has Arkansas connections, has been killed since nine eleven. And so there will be four stops in Mammell. Uh, they'll come down Mammell Boulevard, and one of the stops will be at Odom North and the Boulevard. The second stop will be at the District Court Building at Edgewood Drive, or, I mean, Millwood Drive and, uh, the Boulevard. The third stop will be at the Country Club Parkway and Mammell Boulevard, and then the fourth stop will be at the First Security Bank. And so every ten minutes, they'll make those stops, so eleven twenty, they'll be at Odom North, and at eleven fifty, they will be at, uh, First Security Bank. So if you're around on Sunday, I would, uh, try to get out there on the Boulevard between eleven twenty and eleven fifty and, and, uh, recognize the servicemen that are running to represent, or to memorialize their, uh, fallen comrades. And Bubba Beeson, the gentleman who heads this up, is the same gentleman now that's heading up the field of flags that we put at our Memorial Day Ceremony out at the lake. And, uh, he's gonna be the keynote speaker at the Memorial Day Service this year. The other item I had was, uh, just so you remember, there's no meeting in March for the Planning Commission, they had no items to consider, so there's no, uh, meeting on the fourth Thursday of the month. Uh, and like I said earlier, I'd had some questions, and one of them is, are we doing anything special for the mosquito spraying, uh, because of Nile virus and all that? We, uh, we are, uh, uh, not doing anything additional that we didn't do last year. The Nile virus was already there last year. Typically, we start spraying, uh, the first of April, so I will verify that with Public Works, but we should be starting spraying, um, for mosquitoes in April, uh, around the first of April. And then, uh, she asked about the city remodel project, and we gotta go through the selection process for the architects, uh, before we can start that project. So I can't give you a start date that we will have on that, but it'll be this year, it, I'm sure, on, as far as, uh, at least getting the architects on board and probably bidding the project, so, yeah. Alderman Saunders, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light on.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a qualifications question for you. I had, I was talking to someone before the meeting started, and they asked me about when the Planning Commission meeting is. Is it the last Thursday or the fourth?
It's the fourth.
It's always the fourth.
Always the fourth. It's the fourth Thursday, and it's at six thirty, not at six o'clock. It's the 4th Thursday, and it's at 6:30, not at 6 o'clock, so, yeah. Now, their, their subdivision committee is the 2nd Thursday at 5:30, so their meetings have different start times, but yes, it's the 4th.
Those are both public meetings.
Those are both public meetings, yes, sir. One is conducted, the first one is conducted in the Blue Room, and the second one's conducted in here. Okay, I have nothing else. Planning Commission report, and that will follow the Planning Commission meeting, but we won't even have one this month, so that'll be delayed till May, I guess, before we'll actually have another report on that. Any aldermen's comments? Yes, ma'am. Alderman Timmons?
When we went to the, and we're talking in DC, the Arkansas Municipal League kind of briefed us on some of the issues when we go into these meetings with the senators and the state reps, what the, what the hot buttons were. And Terry, myself, Tina was kind of, you know, making notes. But we were totally impressed with our mayor. He actually went in with handouts of some of the same things that he had passed through about the infrastructure and the, I mean, he was so well-informed and prepared for those meetings. Normally, you know, folks go in, you know, 5 and 10, we must have, he must have talked for about 20 minutes.
Yeah.
And he had their attention, you know? And he can, they gave you sort of the feel on whether they were with you or not at that time, you know, or going to blow you off. But, you know, they weren't able to do that with him, because the questions that they asked him, you know, I was really, really impressed. He knew, you know, the codes and, you know, some of the amendments and everything that they asked him, he had answers to. So it was really a good experience for me, and we all enjoyed it, even though it was cold and he made us walk, and we had to take a train.
Really fast.
You know?
Yeah, I, I walked them to the subway and then away from the subway, and evidently I walked too fast.
Union Station's not that far.
In the cold, it's pretty far, when you're walking through slushy streets.
It seemed to be weather, you know? Had he not been with us, we would have been taking Uber or a cab. We did none of that. And the snow and slush.
Oh, y'all had to go across.
Yeah. But it was really, it was, it was a really good experience. I'm not doing it again.
Thank you, Alderman Timmons. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious question, now that we have the senior, the center on the lake completed and functioning, and those that haven't been there, you need to go, it is awesome. Do we have a timeframe for when we're going to start on the city hall project?
I just answered that question.
You did?
Yes, sir. I said we're going to select the architects, but I couldn't give you a start date on when we're going to start on the remodel of City Hall.
Where was I?
I don't know. I did it during Mayor's comments. You were thinking about your question.
Well, actually, I'm trying to stall for...
You're trying to stall for 40 minutes, but, no, we, we need to select an architect, and then we'll start on the city hall remodel.
I was probably reading or something.
I wanted to get, I wanted to get them completely out so we had, we can see what's downstairs and everything, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that, I'll try to force it a little more, yeah.
Well, you need to be embarrassed once a day for humility.
Okay, all right.
That was my turn.
All right. I promise you, I did talk about it, right after the mosquito spraying, do you remember that?
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay, all right.
I wasn't reading then.
Okay, all right. Any other comments by alderman? Mr. City Attorney?
I just wanted to congratulate again Michael McNeil for getting the Officer of the Year from the Arkansas Court Officers Association. I think sometimes it's really important to remember that sometimes we get big heads and think that we're, you know, running the city and blah, 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 but the average encounter that someone has with the city is, is not with us, it's, it's with the employees. So I think it's important to congratulate them when they're doing a great job, and I think we have some pretty stellar employees here, so.
Thank you very much, I agree. Madam City Clerk?
I do have a couple of brief comments. I wanted to let the council know that I have been able to get the city codes updated. They are updated online. I am waiting for the physical copies to come in, be reviewed again, and then we will be able to get your code books updated. And I think 2015 was the last time that was done, so it's been quite the undertaking. And that's it.
All right. If there's no other business to come before the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Do I have a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, sorry. All right, it's been motioned second that the council adjourns, is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signal if I was saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.